All right, I got six thirty. Uh, let's go ahead and call the evening.
Don Finland.
Marcus Bush.
Lori Lund.
Tom Parker.
Josh.
Andy Parcher.
Ryan Morgan.
Sarah Baker.
Jenna Ebney.
Tygo.
James Zaire.
Zach Wallace.
He was called.
Paige.
Deanna Hicks.
Sarah Bonzak.
Jason Parker.
Justin Park.
Addison Higgin.
Dan McDay.
Adele Wright.
Obi Onthir.
Rory Myers.
Shelby Hatchell.
Mike Wright.
Craig Schwagen.
Jamie Krebs.
Lynn Schwagen.
And Grubbs.
Mary Ann Grubbs.
Barbara.
Caroline Grubbs.
Jake Walker.
Chase Merly.
Melissa Frankham.
Nikki Hall.
Welcome everyone. Pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, good news. Seventh grade. Mr. Walker is gonna get us started tonight.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm here to present student, uh, seventh grade student of the month. Sage Hicks. I'm so pleased to be awarded Sage Hicks with the seventh grade student of the month award. She is the daughter of Sean and Deanna Hicks. She has two siblings, Steel and Stone, who also attended Rock Ridge. Outside of school, Sage enjoys a variety of activities, including softball, volleyball, and basketball. While at school, she participates in speech, band, choir, basketball, volleyball, and art club. Her favorite subject in school is math. Her favorite so- her favorite movie is Spider-Man Into the Spider-verse. Her favorite foods are peanut butter and Twinkies. Her favorite memory thus far, uh, uh, this year at school has been basketball bus rides to away games. People would say her top three qualities are that she is creative, smart, and funny. Over the years, she has received a variety of awards. One that she is fond of is her speech contest award. In her free time, she enjoys drawing, listening to music, and writing. She really looks, she really looks up to her mom and dad. Her mom is always a positive influence, and her dad makes sure she gets her, to her practices to further her success. In the future, Sage would like to pursue athletics, either in basketball, volleyball, or both. One thing Sage would like people to know about her is that AJR is her favorite band, and she really likes rap, hip-hop, and R&B music. And now notes from the staff. Mrs. Rose stated, Sage is a hardworking and enthusiastic student and a respectful and caring classmate. She focuses in class not only to complete her coursework, but to gain better understanding of the topic. She likes to think outside of the box and challenge herself. She constantly tries to improve upon herself, and she is willing to do the work it takes to help her reach her full potential. I am excited to see what she accomplishes in the future. I have no doubt it will be great. Mrs. Danner said, Sage is a wonderful student who works hard at math. She stays focused and completes assignments on time. I love her positivity in class around, in class and around school. I said, Sage is in seventh and eighth grade band and is heard is in her second year playing alto saxophone. She has quickly proved herself to be a leader in the group. She takes the, she takes the music quickly, along with her peers, and helps guide the band through some of the more difficult sections. Sage has no fear of answering questions. She has a great attitude and is always happy to lend a hand when needed. Sage also won't play her saxophone with a neck strap, which I honestly don't know how she does that, but she makes it work. Mrs. Standforth added, uh, Sage is an engaged student who willingly participates in class discussions with frank and interesting responses. In my classroom, she has a very outgoing presence that is appreciated by all. She is helpful to others and works well with anyone she is paired with. She comes into the classroom happy and is ready to learn and contribute first thing in the morning. Congrats to Sage on this honor. She is very well, she is, she is very deserving. Keep up the good work. And Mrs. Weller said, Sage is a very dis- is very deserving of being recognized as student of the month. She demonstrates, uh, qualities of a leader. Sage is responsible, respectful, and a notable problem solver. When reading Sage's assignments, I'm always impressed with her insightful and thorough responses. Sage Hicks.
And I have the student of the month for Rock Ridge High School, and that is Ben Krebs. Do you want to introduce who you brought here to your guest tonight?
Uh, yeah, uh, my mom, dad, siblings, grandparents, and I'm grown married in the back.
Thanks for coming. All right, so Ben was nominated by the teachers for student of the month for October. Um, Ben is a senior and participates in a band, show choir, concert band, pet band, and marching band with Mr. Walker over here. Um, he actually was chosen today for district, uh, the district band for the trumpet, which entails submitting a piece of work that you played, and then he was chosen from the district, so that's pretty awesome. We found out about that about two hours ago. Uh, he is also in theater and the National Honor Society. Next year, he plans on going to Blackhawk College to start a business degree. And once he gets his bachelor's degree, he plans to go to mortuary school. Um, he also was in golf for two years. These are the things that the teacher said about Ben. Uh, Mr. Walker said, I've worked with Ben for seven years now in both band and in theater. In band, his musical ability and quick wit has cemented him as a leader in the group from the get-go. As for our theater program, I recall asking him in junior high if he was going to try out for plays in high school. And he said something to the effect of, nah, that's not for me. I just nodded and laughed internally because I knew that was nonsense, and I was right, because now he's playing Macbeth. I can always count on Ben to contribute and keep things moving, as well as providing me with core movie recommendations. Miss, uh, Tricia Graves said, Ben is a dedicated and serious student. He treats others with res- respect and is focused in a classroom. Ben is very deserving of student of the month. Mrs. Neese says, Ben Krebs is an excellent student who earns outstanding grades, is an active member of the National Honor Society, and works consistently to keep the rocket closet clean, stocked, and organized. Ben is in there every single week consistently filling the food banks for families in our local community. Ben is also a very gifted musician, serving as a section leader for the trumpets and marching band and jazz band. His resume is also filled with many performances within the Rock Ridge Theater Department, serving in such famous roles as Uncle Henry Gale in The Wizard of Oz and currently as Macbeth in Shakespeare's Macbeth. Mrs. DeCarroll says, Ben is a very focused, hardworking, calculus student. Always willing to help out other classmates. Congratulations, Ben. And Miss Hatchell says, while I may not have had Ben this, in class this year, I'm overjoyed that he is student of the month. Ben was always a joy to have in class and was always making me think of things I had not talked about. Ben brought the energy to a classroom and was always motivating his classmates. Ben has always served as a role model for his classmates. Congrats to Ben for being student of the month. Okay, mom. Yeah, you can come up there if you want. All right, so this is going to Tanner McKeg. Would you like to come up, Tanner? Do you want to introduce who you brought tonight? Oh, okay. You said he was coming from football sweaty. I said we don't mind sweaty, so sorry, he's sweaty. Um, I'll go let you hold that. So Tanner was actually nominated, uh, by the teachers. Uh, we had three students nominated by teachers, and then from that list, we sent it out to all of the senior class. And then the students actually voted and chose Tanner for this award. So this is the DAR award, which stands for Daughters of the American Revolution. And so, um, this is a different type of award because now he has to, well, he gets to write an essay. And then he's chosen out of more people to win some, uh, some scholarship money. So, uh, each year, Rock Ridge High School selects one outstanding senior to receive the Daughters of the American Revolution award. Students are nominated by teachers and voted on by the senior class. Nominees must demonstrate the qualities of dependability, leadership, service, and patriotism in school and their community. This year's DAR award winner is Tanner McKeg. Those nominated for DAR award at each school move on to a scholarship contest in the state. Good luck to Tanner as he competes against other students in the area and attempt to earn some college money. So congratulations.
October 2nd was Custodian Appreciation Day, so we feel a lot of appeal up here, so we really appreciate everything FPG does and all the custodians that keeps this place clean and looking nice and all that good stuff, so we really appreciate everything they do, so just wanted to recognize them. Uh, golfers, so we are gonna hold off until November because we have some all-conference stuff coming in. Those are our two individuals, Anthony Carter, that made it to state this weekend. I'll let Mrs. Graves and talk about that, uh, whether you're able to graduate by November. Warburg. Mr. Walker. So send some more.
Yep, I will speak on behalf of Mr. O, who is at rehearsal right now. But on October 4th, uh, Mr. O took, uh, most of the young men in choir to Warburg for the Winter Singing Festival. It's just a long, it's a day-long festival, uh, focusing specifically on men, on male voices. And the people that went for that were Brady Forre, Grant Carlson, Riley McNichol, Chase Merly, Chase Richart, Noah Campbell, Ryan Rossetter, Jackson Morrison, Jacob Hofer, Will Hofer, and Kyle Richart. They spent the day there, doing rehearsals, uh, did a concert in the evening, learned a lot, and had a great time doing it.
Thank you very much. Rock Island County Regional Office of Education Employee of the Month. Uh, this month is Chrissy Workman here at the high school, Kim Dinan at the junior high, Angie Watsonhour at Indalugia, Chrissy Rosari at Taylor Ridge Elementary, Tricia Sowers at Illinois City. So congratulations to those, uh, staff members on a well-deserved recognition. Uh, Indalugia Family Night. Do you want to talk on that or anything? Um, Miss Say had a, had a sick one tonight, so, um.
Um, yeah, we just had family night last week, last Thursday. Um, we had, we found branch food truck there for families, we had a book there. Um, and then we had some art in the hallway, and type literacy and social emotional getting into, into all of that. So we had a really good turnout, and it was really nice to see all the families there.
Donuts and Grumps?
Uh, yeah, so last Thursday, we had our donuts, donuts with Grumps event at Taylor Ridge, um, coinciding with our book fair. Um, we had, uh, we ordered a lot of donuts and we had a lot left over, but we had, I think, I don't know, probably, uh, we got rid of 280 donuts, so you can take out our 150 kids, we had at least 150 people in the building. Um, so thank you to all those who showed up in support of our kids and everybody at Taylor Ridge.
Bring your parent, senior, community member to lunch day.
At the high school, we had, uh, teachers could bring their parent or a senior community member or two uh, for a luncheon during, um, lunch in our cafeteras, so with the students, which is kind of fun, but a special lunch was made for them. And we had about 50 people attend that.
Do you want to move it to November, when it's said?
Yeah, I would move it because I don't have the specific names, and I know she wants to introduce them, so.
I think those are the students that were recognized to be able to come up to this on Friday, but she's gonna talk about the character piece on the deck, or in there. Indalugia Fire Protection District.
For that one, I think she just wanted to thank them for coming. They did our fire drill last week in May came and, um, just kind of helped us look over some things, see if there's anything we need to improve, and gave us some feedback, so I think it was just a thank you.
And the Illinois City Buffalo Prairie Fire Department and Reynolds Fire Department, thank you.
Um, Reynolds is coming to our building tomorrow, but.
So one of the, uh, one of the fire drills that we have to complete during the school year is with fire protection folks on site. And normally, we try to coincide that, um, with the Illinois City Department. They do an awesome job. I don't know if you happen to see on, on WQAD, they do an awesome job of hosting the students in their five stations. And we had to scramble a little bit because that ended up being one of our heat days. So normally, Illinois City will go at either morning or afternoon, then Taylor Ridge will go morning or afternoon. So thanks to them, we locked everybody together for both schools for those five stations, and they made it work. And the stations range from being able to use the big hose to spray a can, to spraying a smaller fire extinguisher. They get to crawl in their smoke room area. There's a video that go along with it. They get to tour all the big trucks and everything. So, um, they really do a nice job of helping with fire safety, kind of fire safety week, as well as helping us with our, with our fire drills. And so anytime you get a chance to see our volunteer firefighters in the area, um, paramedics, they do an awesome job. And it was kind of interesting, I thought anyway, that they also look at it as a recruiting piece. On the, on the highlight with WQAD, they mentioned that this is a way for them to reach out and perhaps put that little nugget in the brain that this is something that they can do to serve their community later on when they grow up. So i- it's kind of a win-win for everybody, and they do it every year, and they, and they just do a great job.
All right, that's it for good news. If you're just here for good news, speak right now next.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we don't want to forward the public comments. Seeing none, we'll move right on to the consent agenda. Everybody have a chance to look at that? Anything you want to pay off and discuss? I only have one addition to that, so. Mr. Carroll's retirement at the end of the 28, 29. Anyway, I undertake a motion to approve the, uh, consent agenda as written. All favor. I propose, okay, move on. Okay, presentations. Mrs. Bonzak, you're first up.
Pleasure to be here tonight, uh, to talk about your June 30th, 2025 financial report. Um, I'm gonna talk mainly from the handout that you do have your package with you as well. The first page of that handout talks about the deliverables from the audit. We have the 2025 financial report. That's the bound document that you have in front of you. Um, there is also, it's called an AFR or an annual financial report, which you can have electronically. Um, it's the report that we submit to the state, um, that has all the metrics of all the school districts of the states on it. Um, and then there's a couple of letters that are also with your packet. When we come out to do the audits, we do several different types of audits. Um, the first type of audit that we do is our financial statement audit. And we have issued an unmodified opinion, excuse me, an unmodified opinion on that financial statement, which is the highest form of, of the one that you can use. Um, the second type of audit that we do is a government auditing standards audit. And the purpose of that's twofold. One is to, uh, look at your internal control system or your checks and balances, if you will, and to test it to make sure that it's, um, functioning as it was designed. And the second part of that is to look at compliance with laws, regulations, contracts, agreements in general. Um, for all of those, we had no findings, which is a very common audit. And then the last one is the federal single audit. So that's the audit of your federal funds. This year, you'll notice in your packet that it's issued in draft format. The Office of Management and Budget hasn't released the 2025 compliance supplement as of today. Um, it's normally released in January of the fiscal year so that we can audit the funds under the guidelines. Um, the American Institute of Certified Companies won't allow us to issue an opinion on that and to final it until the Office of Management and Budget issues their final product, so.
That's not gonna be a time soon.
So we had to contact the Illinois State Board of Education and say, we have AFRs due. What would you want us to do? And so what they have requested we do is to go ahead and split them apart. Normally, they're all in one bound document. Split them apart and issue this contract format. We do not believe you have any findings of your federal programs. Uh, this year, you had 1,340,000 of federal expenditures. We tested the education stabilization fund, which was about 704,000, and we had no findings. But the rules could change, and we will look at it when it's finally released, and until then, it'll stay in draft format. That's that. Um, the next page is looking at your revenues for the district. Uh, this year, your total revenues were 22.9 million compared to about 21.9 million in the year before. The primary increase is due to property tax, which increased about 871,000 and an increase of interest of about 285,000. That was offset by the state, um, had expected to decrease the corporate personal property replacement tax, and it did. They went down about 228,000. Now remember, the property tax that you recognize in your 2025 financials is from the 2023 levy. And the value assessed, taxable assessed value of the district increased about 23 million in the 2023 levy. Um, your rate actually decreased from about 4.5 to about 4.4. Um, if you want to look at a 10-year history of your property, your assessed values, if you, um, go to page 83 and 84 of this bound document, it's just a good history of, of what property tax assessed values of the, and rates of the, over time. The next, uh, page is looking at your dispersments or your expenditures for the year. Um, your expenditures for 2025 were 22 million compared to about 20.2 million the year before. Um, that's about a $1.8 million increase. And as you look across the graph, you'll see that the majority of that is in support service. Um, that's capital projects expenditure. So this year, you had about 2.6 million. The year before, you had about 347,000. Most of that project is your window replacement, which was the summer of the, uh, this 25 year, and expenditures this year related to the new elementary. The next page is looking at your operating funds. The equity of your operating funds was 16.9 million, which was a decrease of about 3,500,000 from the prior year. Um, your operating funds are your educational operations and maintenance, working cash fund, and your transportation fund. Um, the primary reason for the decrease was that $5 million transfer from the working cash fund to the capital projects, to fund your future capital projects. Um, your financial score this year, uh, went down from a 4.0 to a 3.7. And I looked at that, and that's because of your debt capacity also decreased this year with the issuance of those new bonds. So nothing to be concerned about. Um, the, uh, KFR or the Illinois State Board of Education still has, uh, U.S. recognition, which is consistent between years. And your operating equity represents about 373 days of operating expenditures, so that's a pretty healthy position. Okay. The last two graphs are your debt, your outstanding debt. Um, this year, you paid off the Series 2021 bonds. Um, you did issue the new bonds, which were about 32.2 million, and you also had a premium on those bonds of about 1.7 million. Um, the other thing to point out on this is compensated absences. There was a new governmental, um, standards that was released that requires you to, uh, account for compensated absences. So the 1. almost 3 million is an estimate of the current bank of compensated absences, which would include sickly, and what's estimated to be used of that sickly. It's a pretty big number.
Yeah.
The legal debt limit at the end of the year is 8,671,000, so that's what's left of your debt capacity right now. So you need to take more down on the bonds. And then the very last page is just some statistics out of the AFR. Um, your average daily attendance was 977, uh, for 2025, which is higher than it's been for the last three years. Um, your operating expense per people was 11,289. Um, the state's always a year in a rear of giving us those numbers. Um, for 2024, the state average for a unit district was 20,012, but it includes the entire state of Illinois. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
I don't know if we got a chance to talk to her about her time, but one of the things we were curious, I think, I think, was for food services, holiday districts, or any food services. Going, but that's, however, you don't make it affordable, but we sometimes not include too much loss.
Right, and, um, Illinois schools, the nutrition program is buried in the, um, education fund, um, so oftentimes, those metrics without getting into the funds are not present. But it's generally, they don't necessarily operate at an, uh, income-producing level. The intent always is to try and break even, um, but you do see that for the most part, they don't, they, it depends. I mean, we had a couple of really good years where the state was, or the government was funding it.
COVID.
Right.
I think it looks good. Thank you very much.
Uh, the last graph, they know why the operating expense, starting in 2018, just skyrockets above, uh, the expense for it. Do they know why that is?
Which one are you on?
Uh, I'm on the last.
Okay, the last page.
Blues, the Blues of the state.
Yeah, the Blues of the state. The Blues of the state, yeah.
So we're saying pretty soon.
Right, and, and kind of the, the uplift was, was kind of the COVID expenditures of the federal wards that you had for those.
Mass exodus from Illinois.
Yeah.
Let, let the people's divide.
Any questions?
Thank you. All right. Mr. Zizari and Mr. Walker.
I don't have near as big of a packet.
Still like my case.
So, um, each of the principals are, uh, show you or demonstrate to you some goals that they have for this building. Um, I included, um, my packet for you and your board packet, and I'll touch over a few things. If you have questions, let me know. As you have kind of heard already this school year, math, um, is one of the tests that we give. As you have kind of heard already this school year, MAP is one of the tests that we give. And for me, anyway, the two main academic goals I have in conjunction with the MAP assessment is that we, as a building, try to make sure that we have all of our classes that are achieving, what we hope is, high growth and high achievement. And so just to kind of have you look at this, this is kind of an example. And normally, principals will get where their students appear, plus it's being either math and then the box is being reading. And what we really want is we want high growth, high achievement. That's the ideal situation. Sometimes, we can have high achievement with low growth. Sometimes, we can have growth with low achievement. What we want to try to avoid is this quadrant down here, where we're getting low growth and low achievement. And so that's one of my goals, is that each of our classes, as a whole overall, will avoid that quadrant where we want to be. And I think a lot of measures have been taken to help improve that. We've spent time and money now on a reading curriculum and a math curriculum. It's going to take time for those to kind of kick in. But in conjunction with that, our math scores, and I think Mr. Emery shared this a little bit in our last Eben meeting, and I think this is the last bit of your packet. Our math scores at Illinois City, anyway, are not where we want them to be, but our overall school is higher than it was last fall. And so I think what you're going to want to hear as a board is maybe our scores still aren't where they want to be, but they are trending higher. They are showing growth. They are showing improvement. And that was both the case in reading and in math. So, for example, last year, we were at the 55th percentile as a school in math. This year, we were at the 60th percentile. In '24, '25, we were at the 45th percentile in reading. This year, we are at the 52nd percentile. So we're still not where we want to be, but we want to see that growth trend, especially as our new curriculums and our new supports take hold. So my first two academic goals then basically have to do with that high growth, high achievement. And then the other one is kind of tied to that a little bit. It's the perception of hard work. I know our high school students back here have been working hard on their presentation, right? But we want our students to value hard work. And the one thing about that math assessment that is challenging is that it progressively gets harder as the students take more and more questions. Well, you have to have the right frame of mind to be able to approach that. And so it's okay if something gets harder. We want to continue to do our best. And so then we look at things like duration of the test. How long are our students taking the test? Really, our second graders should take about, at least, average 30 minutes. But if we have students who are taking 15 minutes, then where's that hard work coming in? Where's that duration coming in? So those are things that we can look at. So my basic, two main academic goals then are trying to get that, stay away from the low proficiency, low growth, and then really try to have, and that's measured, this measured basically on our Five Essential Survey. Do our teachers feel like our students value hard work? And I think if we can get those two things going, we're on the right track. And then below that are just kind of building things that I've been trying to do for engagement, appreciation of school, wanting to come to school, wanting to do our best effort. And so that kind of goes along with kickoff assemblies, certificate assemblies, and those types of things too that value school. The next page, I'm not going to go over, there's a lot there, but that just shows you the different things that are on the Five Essential Survey. It's a really important survey that goes out to staff and parents, and there's a lot of feedback that comes back from that for our principals. Before I took this role, some of those results weren't real positive, and so I really kind of took those five essential lower parts and really tried to tackle those. And a lot of those engagement things kind of come through those. And so that's kind of just continuing that. And then my last set there is kind of more community awareness than anything else, and Jenna can help maybe share a little bit of this too, is because we've got a new reading curriculum and a new math curriculum, not only is there different approaches for our teachers, but our parents kind of have to do some different things with it. Here's just one example. It used to be that we would have our students go to the library, bring a library book home, and then you kind of want your student to read the library book to you, right? That's not really the case anymore. The case anymore is if you get a library book, it may not necessarily be decodable for your student. We don't want them to try to read that book and get frustrated and then lose that kind of love reading. So instead of that, we need our parents to kind of look for those decodable texts that come home from their activity books, maybe a one-page decodable text. And the parents then read that book from the library. It's still important. It's still good to go to the library and get a book. It's still important for our parents to read to our students. But we don't want them reading that. We want them to read the decodable text for their appropriate level that they're coming back from. Well, if parents don't know that, if they're not aware of these new approaches. Same thing with our math curriculum now. Our math curriculum's a little bit different of an approach. It used to be that, you know, we all had our table of math tables, and we saw how quickly we could do them, right? Your multiple page. Things are a little different now with the math approach. And it really, sometimes it can be frustrating because our math approach now is kind of geared towards what are different ways you can come to a solution, not just one way. And so if Laura gets her answer right away with one way, it could be frustrating to me after that, okay, but how else could you come to that solution? How else could you reason that out? Again, that's a different approach. So instead of getting three pages of math facts home as a parent, now you're trying to get your student to engage in a discussion and reasoning and different ways to approach that problem solver. And so I just share that with because I know that parents often have questions of how they can help. Well, if they don't really know these new approaches to the new curriculum, it's difficult for them to find that place to help if they're interested in that. So I think parent-teacher conferences coming up is going to be really important. There's going to be conversations that I know our staff is going to have with those new approaches. I've asked Jenna to kind of maybe show me her curriculum guidelines that she sends out kind of a newsletter to maybe include some of those things. But I think, I think that's a piece that we have to have as well. It's not only do our students and our teachers kind of embrace how this new approach to these different curriculum ideas are, but our parents can kind of get a feel for that too. Because, well, I don't tell them, but I am a little older, and these are different approaches to this. And there is kind of a learning curve. So that was my final area, is just to kind of try to help parents understand a little bit more the different approaches to the two curriculums. So basically, the academics from the Five Essential information, and then those new curriculum approaches to kind of sharing more information. May I answer any questions for you?
Some of it comes, so the new curriculum and stuff that comes home, it's actually very detailed, but it's a lot. And so I think from thinking about like a newsletter perspective, a summary of some that would be helpful to parents. I feel like we are getting the information in the 15 pages that come home every day. If you haven't seen it, it's a lot for the littles, at least. And so it tells you, hey, parent, it's informative, but I doubt it's getting really ready to its fullest because there's so much of it. So, yeah, I think that's what we're responding with the parents understanding the change. It's a lot of information.
Sounds good. I agree. Any other questions or thoughts? All right, Mr. Goldman.
Not as bad as they look.
Okay, so I don't have a notepad or anything like what Jay has, but if I can connect to the TV, I'll draw your attention that way. Okay. So I took some of our data pieces from the end of the school year last year, as well as beginning of school year this year, and kind of played around and talked to the staff about what we want our goals to be. So we'll start this overview of our school. We've got kindergarten, first grade, second grade, three classrooms of kindergarten with 47 total students, three first-grade classrooms, 49 total students, second grade, two classrooms with 39 total students. Altogether, we're at 130. Our reading curriculum there is the Amplified CKLA. Our math curriculum is iReady, and our SEL curriculum is Character Strong. These are our goals, and we'll revisit them here in a little bit, too. Math, our goal by spring of '26 to have 70% of our kindergartners in our building at our above-grade level, 53% of students at our above-grade level for first grade, 69% of students in second grade grade level for math. Reading, we're looking at 59% for our kindergarten students at reading grade level or above, 72% for our first grade, and 43% for our second. SEL, our goals are kind of in limbo right now, but we're working towards it. Ms. Noe just came back about a few weeks ago from maternity leave. So we have our NCSS meeting on Friday, where we will discuss with our teachers groupings of students that are getting more services and a progress monitoring review, and hopefully we'll have goals maybe in the next month or so. So this is data from the beginning of the school year last year to the end of the school year last year. If you note, the top graph there is K1, 2 in the beginning of the year, and the bottom graph is K1 to the end of the year. The green and blue bars talk about where your meeting grade level or exceeding grade level. So if you notice there, kindergarten level started, they have 32% of students at or above grade level at the beginning of the year. By the end of the year, they finished with 69%. So while I think that our 10% goal of increasing proficiency is lofty, I mean, the data is here that it's possible to have that giant growth all across the board. So that's why I've got a few lives right out of the radius when I talk about, let's set our goal at 10% and see where we're at. But again, just seeing that the data proves it's possible, we're going to shoot for the moon and hope that we did. So this is our data from the beginning of the year. Kindergarten started at 60% at or above grade level in math. So then that's how we get to that 70%. First grade started at 43% at or above grade level. In the second grade, we started with 59% at or above grade level. So if we can hit that 10% growth goal for all three levels, I'd be pretty satisfied. I would say we're not at Mr. Bush's 80 by 80, or 80 at 80, but we're getting close. Reading data, so again, this is, I don't know, it was pretty fun to look at here. That kindergarten piece, they only had 23% of students at or above grade level the beginning of last year, finished the year with 75% of students at or above grade level. So again, that 10%, while it might seem pretty big, the data's there that it's possible to have astronomical growth there. Currently, based on this math data, kindergarten came in this year at 49% at or above grade level. First grade came in with 62% at or above grade level, and then second grade came in with 33% at or above grade level. And then that's our 10% growth, only at 59, 72, and 43 by the end. Some attention areas, Mr. Bezari hit on it pretty well there. We do have a new curriculum, so working through the learning curves, trying to implement best methods to achieve maximum results. We had our math PD on Friday that was put together by Mrs. Sade and Mrs. Emery. I thought, based on everything I've heard from my staff, it went really well. We had the K1 piece that was dedicated to just K1 teachers in the morning, and then 3.5 or 2.5 rather met in the afternoon. And so it kind of, if you come into the building and you see what kindergarten and first graders are doing during math, it might look a little bit different than what second and fifth graders are doing in math. We have different, I don't know, the K1 teachers have a lot on their plate, working with teaching the curriculum and then going to math centers where they're playing games, they're doing activities and independent work, and then they're working one-on-one on five with a small group of the teachers. So it's a lot of juggling, but we're working through it, and I think that PD helped to kind of answer any questions we might have had. And then looking at the reading stuff there, students are really enjoying the knowledge block, the stories that they're covering in that. We've done a few activities, been able to get, we have stuffed animal Olympics or something to do with our ancient Greece unit in second grade that I think was a pretty big hit. So that's, students are engaged with it, and the teachers are, again, jumping kind of through hoops to keep them engaging and keep school fun and making sure that we're having fun while we're getting what we need to get done. Any questions?
Just a comment, I guess. The second grade reading?
Yeah.
Did that group have problems last year in reading, too?
So they were first grade last year? Let's see.
So something to know about the second grade map reading test is that in the past, so two years ago and all of the years before that, we, there's a 2 through 5 map test, and there's a K through 2 map test. The K through 2 map test, it's read to them. So it's basically listening comprehension. So they score a lot higher on that, and then the 2 through 5 map test, they have to read it themselves. So when we ask them to read it themselves, we see a huge dip from when they listen to it versus when they had to read it themselves. So last year, we flipped it and had our second graders try it and read it themselves, and so we did see a huge decline then because of that reason. This year, however, we did get some guidance from that that told us if there's a certain score, those students should read it themselves. If they're below that score, they should listen to it. So we did kind of divide second grade up into those two different areas, and so different kids had different tests, and that was okay. But it was just kind of what is more appropriate for that student at that time. So our second grade data is kind of up and down just because of that reason. We're trying to find that happy medium where every student's getting a test that's appropriate for them. So it's not surprising to me that our second grade data does look like that. I'm just trying to figure that out. They're kind of in the age where they should be able to read, but we still have a lot to teach them, you know? And so it's just kind of that grade where that test is really hard to get.
Yeah. And that goes to kind of what Jay was talking about, where that test will progressively get higher, so if they're getting that K2 test, then they're maxing out of that second grade content. Whereas if you've started that second grade test, the 2.5 test, there's potential that you're working third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade. So, yeah.
So we're just doing standardized testing then twice a year, then?
Three times.
Three times. So it's map test three times?
Or? Yeah, we'll do it right after break, right after winter?
Math again is after, yeah.
And then again in spring. I think for second graders, you have one way to grow as well. They have to grow a little bit. Sending young students. They'll look better this year, I think.
That one's been a challenging group, I believe.
I just had one comment, too. Remember, one of the tidbits I had from Mr. Bezari's presentation last year was like how different states compare because they set different metrics. But there's an interesting thing in the news that I thought was worth sharing that usually it's the national record card that compares different states, and that's only every two years. And now with the Department of Education, it is that the federal government, there's no guarantees on that. But it's interesting that MWEA that puts on the map test is going to be coming out with a new tool that every, that three times a year, they're going to be putting out the national averages across the different states. So I think they'll be really interested in, as he has Mr. Bezari pointing out, how we stack, you know, even relative to Iowa and others, you know, on the national, not just within our state.
We said in a little bit of that change in cut score available, because those cut scores are significantly higher than Iowa and Indiana.
So he's got a level on that.
Yeah. So they're trying to make it more of a level playing field at this point.
Yeah, so in the past, the green and blue, so the green, the lowest green is the 61st percentile. So they always told us if you're at the 61st percentile, you are projected to meet on the state assessment. So now that IAR has switched all of their norms, MAP is now trying to align with what the state norms are. And so the webinar we just did, every single grade level and every single subject has a different percentile cut score. So you would really have to like dig in, I mean, you could pay a company to do it for you, or you have to really dig in and find every single grade, every single cut score. But some of those cut scores are incredibly higher than the 61st percentile. So they're really raising the bar to of what we would consider proficient. So it'll just be interesting to see once we get that solidified, how it looks in MAP, and what our greens and blues are going to look like once they've aligned that.
To kind of go back to the old way of thinking here, as we've talked about, the last kid's 60% was not grade level, that was true in math.
Right. But when you think of it the other way, percentages, if you go to the doctor, you're the 50th percentile that's average. So like when you tie up those numbers, like that yellow bar includes the 50th percentile, which is what we would consider average, but that's not included at our at mark or where we would like to meet. The bar just keeps getting higher.
As it continues to change, we'll continue it up to, and it'll change probably tomorrow.
Well, just, I guess for my seat, as long as we keep doing what's best for the students and don't just get caught up on chasing that on the first one. Educate kids. Educate kids and make good people out the back door. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, young people. Young floor.
Good evening. My name is Rory Myers.
My name is Addison Trinkin.
My name is Jackson.
My name is Olivia.
My name is Adele Wright. We are coming to you today to suggest a change in the schedule of homecoming activity day. The first hour of advanced English three class would like to propose a schedule change for homecoming activity day. We believe it would be more beneficial if we had the activity day on Friday instead of Thursday.
The original reason for Thursday being activity day was so students could decorate floats. Nowadays, we don't decorate floats. Instead of we decorate indoors. So since we do not decorate floats anymore, that eleven-thirty on Thursday is not necessary.
We've included three different benefits of changing activity day to Friday. The first benefit is that we believe attendance could increase if activity days on Friday because students will be signed up for activities that day and students have to attend school Friday to attend the football game and homecoming games. Another benefit is that students may want to participate in more homecoming, uh, homecoming activities such as dress up days and activity day. Finally, the third benefit of changing the activity day will increase academic time throughout the whole week because on Friday, students and staff are tired from activity day. But by changing the days, we believe Thursday will get more active academic time because it's the activity day.
Over eighty percent of high school students stated that they would like to change activity days Friday. There were few no answers and seven percent with no. For the people who said no, they did not leave any comments, so we are unsure as to why they said no.
For the high school teachers, a majority of them say that students look tired and are much less productive after activity day. One teacher states, students are very tired when they come to school on Friday after activity day. It would be in the best interest of students and staff that it be changed to Friday. Another states, I think it brings up a good point because when the kids come to school Friday, their minds are on what is happening at the game or Saturday dance. They are not great listeners in the classroom.
After reaching out to the high school staff, we found that seventy-five percent suggest that we go along with the change. The other twenty-five percent, however, had no preference.
One of the concerns from the staff was from Ms. Baker, who stated, as long as the change is okay with the athletic coaches, then she was okay with it. We were given approval by Coach Graves as well as other staff members. Mrs. Graves and Mr. Grinch just see no reason why this would be a bad idea because if anything, it would increase student attendance.
After gathering information from the junior high and elementary schools, we found that Mr. Bizarra does not believe that Illinois City Elementary School would be affected by the change. Also, Mr. Gobin said that early on terms, they confuse the students, so it would make more sense to have it on Friday. Mrs. Sade states that Indole's grade school would not be affected by this change. And junior high principal, Mrs. Corla, said that this change would not affect the junior high.
Student council members are in favor for this change as they agreed with it as long as high school coaches did.
Coach Graves even states, I don't think it affects anything negatively. I think it sounds fine. The cheer coach missed stand for things. That would work fine for the cheer team. We also spoke to Mr. Walker, who believes this will work for the band as well.
As you can see, a vast majority of the students and staff are in favor of this change. Thank you for listening to our proposal and we hope you will take this change into consideration.
What's your next step?
To change the date?
What's the next step? Doesn't make that happen. Have you talked to the calendar committee in Iceland?
Yes.
Okay, that's the next step. So they bring it to us all.
We talked to them before we talked to you.
Okay, you're on the right track.
So is activity day was originally to decorate floats?
Uh, yeah, but nowadays we don't do that. And we talked to like a bunch of the high school students to make sure like everybody would agree with this change. And after talking with some of the high school students, uh, we figured out that a lot of them have younger siblings. So it'd be a lot harder for, like the younger siblings to like be able to watch the parade and everything because if they're gonna have somebody there with them, then they're worth it to watch the thing.
So what type of activities, you guys do on activity day?
Um, we play like a lot of games, like we included a lot more stuff this year to have, like make sure everybody was like being involved. Um, there's like a lot of painting, like sidewalk chalk, volleyball, tuck a rope, um, like relays, like a watermelon, even popcorn stuff, a lot of stuff.
Is it just high school? Junior has?
But the parade stays on Thursday.
Yes, it would stay on Thursday.
We would just push it back an hour to deal with like bus times and so the parents could get off work and get there in time to watch the thing. So we pushed it back to like six.
Did you reach out to any community members? Cause I mean, I, I know another district that changed even a parade route, they, they went crazy. So not us, another district, I won't mention anyone's.
I'd only, I'd only throw off one red flag pushing parade back until six o'clock. If homecoming is this week, it's dark. So be careful how late you push it back. You're gonna give kids back how late in the year, so.
I think that when we like, we're thinking about that too, we thought about like the fact that there wasn't gonna be like a groundbreaking ceremony. So like, it'd be a lot easier because like it'd get over. And I think it would be a lot easier for student councils all because you've gone from eleven, eleven-thirty, cleaning up for activity day and then coming, having to come back at three-thirty. Sometimes like for a lot of, like, I don't feel like a lot of girls, they have like, um, appointments set up, so it'd be a lot easier just to like right after school, get everything set up. And then once it, like younger kids and students get there, you can just get them on and start moving the thing.
It's also nice because like especially for athletes who do things in the parades and also in the pep rally, it's a really long night and then to have to go to school the entire day and then have the game that night, it's like a lot. So in my mind, when I think about like, oh, Thursday, I get to have this super chill school day and then go and do the parade and then have a really fun day on Friday and then get to go home early and rest before the game and the long weekend. It is like, it just makes a lot more sense for like students.
Any more questions?
I'd say I think you did a really great job of demonstrating it and presenting it and super impressive. I gotta have this conversation around the parade for the fall and stuff.
So what'd you learn from the process of getting something changed at the calendar level and at the district board level? Think continue to get harder, doesn't it, Mr. Bizarra? All right, thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good. All right, Jamie.
So at the September period for the first quarter of the fiscal year, starting with the financial statement, I just want to point out that I'm looking at the cash, um, the cash in our regulatory account for Fund Seventy. We're not using that, we don't know if we need to touch that. I think we're gonna move the rest of that to our PMA account. I, I don't wanna move any more than that right now because Blackhawk, um, we're trying to keep them from dropping our rates even more. So I think what you have in there right now is fair and we're still making a good amount of PMA. So with the PMA rates dropping, we're about a little less than half, half of a percent difference. So I think it's fair to keep the allocation the way it is right now, but we will move the rest of that Fund Seventy checking over to PMA. And then looking at the revenue expenditure report, you'll see that, um, as we've mentioned, September is when our spending is all taken. So specifically in our ed fund, you'll see that all those salaries that back to school supplies kicked in for the school year. So create a change from the first two months of the year. And this is the report you can reference it if you wanna see how our revenues and expenditures trend for the year. So moving on to the cash flow report, this is back as of June period because now we have improved budgets. This is where we look at what our actual costs are compared to what's budgeted. Uh, the percent, uh, target, the targeted benchmark, the way we determine that is we look at trends from prior years and see how revenue and expenditures have flowed in. Uh, so sometimes that's an imperfect measuring tool because, uh, revenue specifically can really change just on the timing of when those flow through. We expect the expenditures to be pretty consistent from year to year unless there's a big project or a one-time purchase. Uh, and then we can usually report that to you. So in looking at the revenue fund, uh, you can see our revenue is about eleven percent higher than what our targeted benchmark is. We've had an extra property tax payment come in this year where we use, usually have three, like in Mercer County. Um, and now we're having four, so they're chipping some of that money in a little bit sooner. So because making up most of the change, our revenue has just been pretty timely. So one good thing Mercer County sent us their property tax.
Yeah, they gotta do it right though.
Report that to you next month. But the nice thing to see is our expenditures are pretty spot on and we're half a percent variance from where we're targeted. So that's pretty good. So that shows that we're budgeting fairly. And then, uh, looking at operations and maintenance, the biggest change there, or the biggest variance there is we had that roof replacement claim, um, that we put through, the money came through for that, which was not anticipated when we created the budget. So, uh, that's making a lot of that variance from our targeted benchmark in the revenue, which is favorable. But that's, that's what's causing that type of difference. And then on the expenditure side, so we kind of have an extra favorable, uh, situation here because our revenue looks higher because of that money that came in for that claim. But then our expenses are quite a bit down from what we typically spend every year. Uh, most of our project costs flow through our operations and maintenance funds specifically in the last couple of years with those federal funds. So with all of our project costs being related to the new building and those are being ran through the capital projects fund, we're seeing a big decrease from that trend. We'll see that level out as we go through the year, especially as we get into those winter months. And then transportation, uh, looks pretty good. Uh, we're about ten percent, which is what we budgeted as our benchmark for revenue and expenditures are pretty close to there with the one percent of what we planned for. So for the first quarter of the year, our projections are looking good and fair from what I can see. And then looking at the, um, interest statement at Blackhawk Bank of Trust, you can see that that's up a bit. So that's because we are heavy on revenues right now. So, um, but we, if we move too much out of there, we're gonna see that dip and it's a pretty stable, uh, interest earning right now. So we'll, we're gonna keep it there and hopefully we'll see.
What's PMA's rate?
Uh, so it has gone to about four point one percent. So we were about four point two five. So it's dropping a little bit, not as significantly as they forecasted it might. So I think we're still in a pretty good.
Still have a point better than Blackhawk.
Yeah. And then speaking of PMA, uh, you'll see that those, uh, treasury investments are set to mature here in the next month. So, uh, Marcus and I were talking about what, what that's going to look like going forward. We have been doing six to nine month investments, but right now with the volatility of the, um, anticipated changes, uh, we might be looking at more short-term investments to get a higher, a higher rate. So we're, we're gonna be working with PMA a little bit more closely in the next month to see what our options are. But just to be aware that we might try some different things to try and get the best rate while we can.
As long as it's protected, that's good.
Yeah, we'll avoid those four games.
Keep us in, keep us in the blinds.
Yep. And then, uh, looking at the quarterly report, uh, so as I mentioned, we're through the first quarter of the fiscal year, which is about twenty-five percent of the fiscal year, but we are only about ten percent, in the school year in terms of expenditures. So we start in August, but those payroll and, uh, supply costs don't hit until September. So we consider for about a tenth of the way through the school year, we would expect those percentages to be anywhere from ten to twenty-five percent. So some of the areas that are different from that are, are special ed services. So they are typically behind. That's nothing new. They have gotten even further behind. So we would typically get our first billing for special ed services and those are services that we outsource, outsourced through FAS Ed. Uh, we would get those in about November, but we aren't getting those until, uh, January, February now, if you've had. So they're pretty behind on that billing and we now get about two billings a year. So we should see that, um, look a little better come the third quarter. But I anticipate that we'll see about zero percent until, until we get to the spring. And then also Title Two, that's down quite a bit. That's because at the time, uh, the school year started, we did not have any funds allocated from the, um, from the federal government for those, uh, costs. So we are not paying the mentoring program the same way as what we typically have in the past. And instead, those funds that we did receive later will be used for, um, professional development. So. And then lastly, uh, the tuition for vocational, that's one thing I do wanna mention. So, uh, in the past, dash five, seven years, um, those costs have continued to go down. And we were typically between fifteen and twenty-five grand for paying for those costs that we paid U T. That's what we paid for the area career center. But they are actually, we received our first bill for that and it's about, um, twenty thousand. And we'll pay that one more time. So that's definitely up about fifteen thousand from what we expected. Not a bad thing, but something that we'll know the budget for, uh, next year. And we'll make some adjustments on some other areas to make sure they account for that. And then, uh, last thing to point out on the quarterly report is on the construction fund. That is the only area where our revenue is lower than, than those, um, targeted areas. And that is because, um, the facility tax money comes in three months behind. So what we've received in July, August, and September are actually for revenue, um, sales in April, May, and June. So we have to book those back when we, um, close out the prior year. And so anything that's come in this year is mostly related to interest or, um, the revenue that's been higher than what we estimated when we booked those revenues back. So. And then speaking of facility tax, uh, you can see that our revenue is much higher, which Tom had asked about. So we looked into that a little bit. Enrollment hasn't changed much, so our allocation amongst the county hasn't, hasn't changed much at all. But that county revenue is up drastically. So we looked at just last year, what came in for, um, would be June, uh, sales. So revenue for September and we're about, the county as a whole is about four hundred thousand dollars higher. So that makes up almost about twenty thousand dollars for us, which is, as you can see, we were twenty thousand less last year. So that's what's making that the big difference.
I did some more research essentially on that.
I thought that.
So then the big chunk of that is now, um, like you buy something from Amazon, they charge tax on where it's going. So, um, all that internet stuff. Yeah, thank you. Uh, that's, uh, that's huge money. I mean, it's, it's a couple hundred thousand dollars a year for us on that. Death in taxes.
So and then lastly, uh, on the lunch report, uh, we did notice that the, um, the online payments weren't coming through that first report that was ran. So you got an updated August, statement in September, which makes that final position at the end of September a lot nicer. So, uh, we're looking at about forty-one thousand, feeling good right now as of, uh, the end of September. So, um, we'll see how those, um, increased rates have been, how much they help this year. So. We should not see a huge change in payroll. We, we, we did try to make. We, we did try to make a change, we made a change to the rates to try and separate our whole-time staffs. They're not making the same as just a sub that comes in. So they did, there was still some increase there for the payroll side, but we should see that starting to level out from year to year. Unless they make some changes. So supplies are just very volatile right now, so I don't know if it is and we have to adjust.
Great. Any questions for Jamie?
I was curious on the professional one, like the increase, is it a cost to increase or is it more people participating?
Students.
And boss said just.
I don't know. I, I don't know. I.
I mean, not that, well, I'm not urging a bill, sure, but usually a late bill is not a low bill.
Correct.
It, it is unfortunate for us because we're stuck in the spring and the end of the year trying to figure out where our costs are. So we budget based on what they spend, but we don't gain hard numbers from them until we get that first bill. So that's frustrating. We start pressuring them around November, December, but I rarely get a response until the budgeting when we get back from winter break. So I don't know what the change has been in the last couple of years, why they're waiting so long. It's too long, so it's frustrating.
Well, we didn't have them meeting this month because they didn't have one. We'll see if they, if they have a meeting in November, we'll have one.
Those guys didn't have a meeting, they're pretty good, Billy.
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Jamie. All right, discussion items. You kids welcome to evacuate at your own.
Thank you. Thank you for everything.
Thank you for everything.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. They weren't eating. I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. They wanted to go to the volleyball game, took a little bit of.
Okay. Discussion items, lawyer requests.
Had a few this month. I responded with Blackhawk was a question one, which wasn't a big deal. Got a couple more from my friend on the way. I responded to one of them with a question asking about a timeline aspect of things and didn't respond back. So you didn't respond back? I didn't respond back to this, it was a case from there. Got some closing, Mr. White, so we can see how it goes.
Risk management?
All we did was make a few changes, a few updates to risk management plan. Really those updates were some dates in there. We had a couple of findings where one piece of maybe this percentage was paid versus this percentage. We just made sure that they were done. Bruce took a look at it for us. We added Bruce's cost to that. We added some insurance pieces that they suggested, but really all the changes were, they based upon what Bruce suggested us make. So those are a few that they suggested and we suggested not to. Those retort, I didn't wish to.
All right, resolution review and delegate to attend the ISP. I think you're the delegate, right?
Yes, I am. It doesn't sound like it's going to be as exciting as the past couple of years, so.
It didn't look like there was a whole lot of things that had much.
Right. I looked at it, read it all and.
10 items and then the seat belts, basically.
Right. And it'd be like, do adopt, they're suggesting that we adopt it all.
Oh, yeah, I, you may have a chance to look at that stuff. There was nothing that was worth sharing.
We were like either 10 or 12. This was weird that there was just one.
Yeah, because I think in the past there's, yeah.
Is there a date that we had to have all our buses with seat belts?
2031.
31.
Because we're under 2,000 students, so we can apply for a waiver to waive that until 2034, I believe.
That gives you 10 years from the fleet over 10 years from now.
I would, I would plan to, so I'd like to if we can financially be able to turn that over. We have some older buses, but we have some, Jesse's working through some different pieces.
Do we have any buses with seat belts on them that?
Like installed throughout all of us? No. I mean, we have some for, like, students IP requires one or something like that, but no, we're not going to walk into a bus that has lap belts or shoulder belts on them. But this is for any new purchase one after, I forget the date on that.
I thought it was 2031.
But anyway, this is more of a. Another unfunded day, they might say, well, I'm still just asking that, they have to find some funds in order to pay for it before they do it. Think that you adopted one to pursue it before and it doesn't go anywhere, but at least they're trying. I think that, so that is.
I imagine more of the seat belts. Those are the force set. Muskrat. You have like little alarms.
I would hope and then I would hear the bus, they're like. They want to do this.
Or beep that, Jamie, just like beeping, I tell you.
Yeah, yes.
Did it cost $18 for a bus deal?
Yeah, so they give an indicator of which ones not.
Examples.
Over my, it's already a, oh yay.
Yep. Yeah, because the other one's going to be just like consent agenda.
Yeah.
Resolutions, all the constitution.
Those are just policy updates and how they run their regulationation, which is something I would.
I guess we're also going to vote for an officer slate and it's only one, one person president, one person supervising.
Can't go wrong.
So I might.
Sounds like the kind of job that everybody wants.
Yeah.
All right, next one.
We're hearing again, EAB increasing 178%.
Great. That's got to stop at some point, haven't it?
It does, yeah.
The housing market's starting to slow down a little bit, so I would see a little relief from EAB increase hopefully next year. But it's a state of the law, it's such an EAB increase, it's not like Rockland County or anything like that. They just go on how much houses are going up after year for year. So the question being is with that increase in EAB.
Yes, okay.
We don't have any big storms come through and people don't continue to do all these upgrades. Stephen Professor asked them to increase the set values and there was a lot of that for a couple of years.
Said big storms come through and everything.
And then people do their house with their friends and checks with the set values too, so.
Just know that it'll take us over that 4A at that point. So if you're okay with that, then multiply the, you know, puts box and puts box and put it on the, on the website. We'll hear a little here and there everywhere, but any reason, it's about the school district, it's about the state.
Well, it has, this one, I talked about, our rate has gone down.
Yep.
At some point in time, you may need that. The only way to get it back is to go to the voter.
Well, Andy had some big discrepancies that some of the counties that we need to account for, so until we.
School counties only have two. So I know where you're going with this one.
But truly, I think that's an unfortunate thing because actually you do need to try and make sure we factor what's due to us. Until that job is being done more accurately, then we have to cover our end as much as we can.
Absolutely. I agree with you. All right, so you'll have a resolution for tax levy then that's coming.
We'll have a presentation next month and then I just think where you guys will go along. We'll give you guys a couple of options and, and we'll.
All right, homecoming activity day proposal. That was what the kids just talked about.
Just if you had any more discussion regarding that.
Oh, yeah, they did a phenomenal job. I forgot that we did like.
Remember education, work attendance.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we just don't have any cap days that week, like multiple days.
We are not proposing that. We are not proposing that. No, we did have a kid respond for a service and we're like, make it a full day activity day. We're like, whoa, 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 not us. Like, that's not us.
So you have the 11:30 dismissal.
Yes, the 11:30 on our day.
Yeah, I understand the deal. It's hard to come back on a Friday if you had a screw around day on a Thursday.
Correct.
Makes sense.
Social, emotional learning.
All right, moving on. 10-year health and life safety report.
Yep, Sky Johnson, we were up for attending health and life safety, like two years ago, we postponed it just waiting for the referendum and so on and so forth. So now Rachel Johnson, which is our district attorney, went through justice building to determine some health and life safety pieces. Basically gets us up to code. I don't exactly know more about it than I do. But as far as gets us up to code, here's some things that we need to be able to do. It is something that we love you for and we save up money over 10 years to kind of go from there. If you take a look at what should be in your board packet, which is from, it starts here, but it's really about halfway through. Kind of give you two different pieces there. The big thing is looking at priority A, priority Bs and priority Cs. As are basically pole stations. They have to have a pole station by every exterior door. That's got to be upgraded. It is something that building and grounds looked at, potentially given a quote from the people that are going to do the fire alarm system from the elementary. Because we know that that fire alarm system, I had to talk to this one, so they're trying to figure out ways to make them kind of talk, which. But I, I think a new fire alarm bar here is really, really expensive. Like for this building, might push a half million dollars of DMI gas.
I think he thinks that, I mean, it's, it's up there. Because I think one for the reasoning too is I think people aren't happy with some parts, they're wanting to go with the filter system. But it seems like that's where it belongs to, at least what we're thinking of, because it's a big chunk of money.
So those are ones, the As need to be done within a year. Bs I think have five years. Cs, they're on there, you can do them. You can use that levy money to do them and the only thing part that's on there is asbestos removal for flooring and then you need new flooring down for that. So it would be nice to be able to have that opportunity to get rid of the asbestos or the mastic at least underneath of it and then get new flooring taken care of. Since this, that room right behind this hall, there's a couple junior high, there's three junior high rooms we got to finish up. Three junior high rooms and that room I'd like to be able to get done this summer because those would be quickly turned over. But then we have basically down the old freshman hallway, getting rid of that stuff, the quad block.
Asbestos, the old freshman hallway?
So there's, there's carpet, so it's the mastic, that's, that's expensive. Scott really said that you guys have done a really good job of keeping up to date. I mean, this is a various, if you took off the asbestos, that's a really small bill for a building of this size. And kind of come back up to quote unquote code, I suppose you say with that. So really just discussion here and then looking to put it on the November meeting for approval for that. To give us a little bit of time to kind of get stuff coordinated for this summer. And you know, he said some of these things would have to go through your contractor or whatever it is, but some of them, Greg might be able to do as well. I think door closures and stuff like that. So, you know, I think right now we have about 1 million in this fund here. So you know, the, I think the asbestos removal we can kind of pick off as we kind of build that fund back up throughout the years is what I'd like to be able to do.
Health and life safety, we love you for that, all of those. We don't use any 1% money or anything like that.
So just discussion, are you good with this? I mean, by the time, if you were to do everything, which includes asbestos removal and I think form polishing is what he has, it comes out to 1.4, 1.4 million, I think, coming out too.
That's what you're thinking from the summer's project?
Probably not the 1.4 total because I would want to get the A and Bs done first and then let that fund get built up again to finish out like a majority of those classrooms that have that mastic. This summer I'd like to do the three junior high rooms and then that office over there, as far as asbestos removal goes. So Amy stopped in, we talked a little bit about this today, so he's going to look it over too to see.
Junior high had these rooms and all he got bucks, the freshman hallway.
Basically freshman and then this, this room too.
Well, if you're doing that, why wouldn't you do this room at the same time?
This is a, I'm going to mess up one way though. One is, once you pull it up, it goes airborne horses. That one's a different type. That one's an aisle room. Yeah, something like that. I don't know. Somebody in here knows a lot more about the state, but that's just a tile where it pops up.
What? Those are anyway?
There you go. So that tile pops up, that's not, this is, because that's the glue underneath it or something like that. So it's like, and then the big reason for that one is because John's office is getting taken over, so John's over there.
It's all about you.
Just to echo what you were saying too, like I think we had like 30 items. He said the last schools will have like 80 items or so. So overall, I mean, even though there's a long list, it's a, you know, pretty small.
We've been shooting away at stuff for the last 10 or 12 years.
He said he was really happy with really, I mean, door closures and whole fire lines by, that's not a big deal as far as what he made it sound like.
How often are these studies?
Every 10 years. All right.
Yeah, I think one of the things, see much of that timing too, you can delay the timing of approval of these too. Because I've not started studying the conference yet. So, but I think what you propose is a good timing.
I think if it gives us an idea, hopefully we can, we talked about that December, January timeline, so that way we can go get, we have to go simplex if we stick with them. To get bids out to be able for them, they don't have to bid, but they might come in and be able to get us some, some pieces to get those fire alarms put in there in order of the door closures. Those are the two really big, unique things that really.
And door closure is great to do, just matter getting them through.
In time, there you go.
As long as the lady with the checkbook approves the timing on it.
I think it's good.
Behaves and.
Okay, building the ground.
Yeah, building grounds. A few things, while Sky was here, we also have greenhouse stuff, so he's going to work with Mr. Looney. He's got a big question right now is, does she want a hand washing station? But the more we've talked about it, the more susceptible he is going to be to buy that thing. So looking at some pieces there, but the plan is to be up for bid and he's going to help with that as well. And then get that taken care of this summer, really start right in the May, beginning of June and have that whole back area kind of taken care of as well because of.
We'll have a new pre-announcement falls, will you, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, that's. So that was a bit, that was one of the big ones. So that's, I'll just keep you updated as stuff kind of comes in and goes out as far as when we're going to release bids and so on and so forth. But Scott and Amy seem to be on top of that, so I'm not too worried about it. They'll be doing some instructions up back there anyway, tearing off that little lean-to piece of it, getting ready for the big chiller. So looking, you're doing probably some of that concrete back there and so on and so forth. So we're some, should see some changes back there.
What's that, what's that project up to now?
Ish depends on, there's a few dependings on, but yes.
And they can have a rate of 30, 40, how much?
Last I heard it was about 37, it's about 300, it was taken out of my mind, but they had raised on like. They're looking into it, getting to it, so we should have some stuff here pretty quickly across the group, hopefully at some point.
The good news is that the money that we planned for having to transfer from the head fund to the new building, we're not going to have to use as much as what we were planning for. So the idea is that someone's had, will go towards this.
Oh, we use 1% of this too.
Correct, yep.
In good shape.
Very good.
Other pieces, you know, we, we reached out to Zach and Caleb, talked about potential other opportunities for secure entrances and potential expansion of the restroom or main door, waiting room, kind of a deal. Sent some pieces there as Zach came tonight early and we walked through the building and just talked different kind of ideas as far as, you know, junior high secure entrance. He came with a plan here. Looking at the high school one on this one that you sent me. Looking at the high school one on this one that you sent me.